Good morning, Chairman. You need to turn your microphone on, Chairman.
Good morning and welcome to the virtual meeting of the Children and Young People Scrutiny Committee. My name is councillor Rob Kendrick and I'm the chairman of the committee. Welcome to all members in an office in attendance today. In particular councillor Mrs Julie Kiley, who has been joining the committee in place of councillor Sarah Parkin. I hope you enjoy your time on the committee, Julie. The audio feed of this meeting is being broadcast via the Cadd council's website. And I'd also like to welcome members of the press and public who are listening to our meeting today. Anyone invited to speak during today's meeting should unmute their microphone and switch on their camera. Please do turn off your camera and microphone when you're not participating in the meeting. With regard to voting at today's meeting, and this is a change to some previous practice. It is now possible for democratic services and Samlock laptop users, including myself, to see up to forty nine people on the screen. This reduces the need for roll calling, which as you know takes some time. Therefore, for minutes and reports on today's agenda, I'll ask the committee members to turn on their camera and all others present to turn their camera off. That we can then use a show of hands, which is visible on the camera, so you actually have to physically raise your hand to do that. If you wish to speak, please use the chat function and type speak as a comment. All officers and members are welcome to use the chat function. Requests to speak will be collected by my vice chairman councillor Alexander Moore. The senior scrutiny officer will indicate in the chat when a new item has begun. If you do experience any IT issues during the meeting, please end the call using the red phone icon and rejoin the meeting using the link previously provided. If you experience connectivity issues while speaking, please turn your camera off as this may help. If you continue to experience IT issues, please contact Simon Firth, IT engineer for assistance. Can I also ask that members who are intending to leave the meeting or returning to the meeting indicate using the chat function? Officers do not need to do so. So we'll move on to the order of proceedings for today's meeting. Can I please ask Trina Coates, senior democratic services officer, to confirm the presence of all members and officers in attendance at the meeting? Over to you, Trina.
Thank you, Chairman. And good morning, members. Could I please ask you to confirm your presence when your name is called? So councillor Rob Kendrick.
Present.
Councillor Alexander Moore.
Present.
Councillor Matt Bowles.
Present.
Councillor Mrs Wendy Bockett.
Present.
Thank you. Councillor Matthew Fido. Councillor Matthew Fido. Councillor Mrs Julie Killie. Councillor Colin Matthews. Councillor Colin Matthews. Councillor Mark Whittington.
Present.
Councillor Linda Wotton.
Present.
Councillor Ray Wotton.
Present.
Reverend Philip Johnson.
Present.
Mrs Megan Matchin.
Present.
I'm just going to go back just to see whether councillor Colin Matthews has managed to get in, because I know he was in earlier. Councillor Colin Matthews, are you there? He may join later then. Councillor Matthew Fido, are you there yet? And councillor Mrs Julie Killie. Okay, moving on, we also have today councillor Mrs Patricia Bradwell.
Hello.
And councillor David Brailsford.
Hello.
We also have the following officers present today's meeting. Heather Sandy, executive director of children's services. Sheridan Dodsworth, head of special educational needs and disability. Charlotte Gray, acting head of service children's strategic commissioning. Tracy Johnson, senior scrutiny officer. Joe Cavner, assistant director early help. Eileen McMorrow, senior project officer special schools project. Mary Meredith, service manager inclusion and high need strategy. Dave Pennington, head of property development. And Martin Smith, interim assistant director education. Thank you, Chairman.
Well, thank you, Trina. Has anyone who is participating in the meeting today not had their name called out by Trina?
Hello. Hello, it's Colin Matthews. Sorry, I'm here.
Thank you councillor Matthews. Good to hear you. Thank you. We'll now move on then to the first item on the agenda, apologies for absence. Trina, do we have any apologies?
Yes, Chairman, we've received apologies from councillor Rob Boots and from Alex Sayer, parent governor rep.
Oh, thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman, can I just add, please, sorry that councillor Fido is trying to log on, but he's having some IT issues.
Oh, thank you very much. Thank you. There's no other apologies. We'll move on to declarations of councillors' interests. If any member would like to declare an interest, please indicate by typing speak in the chat column. Councillor Moore, do you have any members who'd like to declare an interest?
Sorry, Mr Chairman.
Oh, councillor Whittington.
Sorry, Mr Chairman, I'm having problems with my speak button, chat function. Yes, just my regular declaration. I've got an adopted son, the receipt of services from the Bonados service. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you councillor Whittington.
Chairman, I also make a declaration of interest, please. Under agenda item six, the strategy for communities with specialist need. A number of the schools that will benefit from that strategy are clients of the Streets Chartered Accountants who are my employer. So I won't take part in the discussion on that item.
Thank you very much, Councillor Moore. That's fine. Thank you. And if there are no further declarations of interest, then we can move on. Obviously, if you find something later on that you wish to declare, you can do so later on in the meeting. We'll move on to item three now, which is minutes of the committee held on the fourth of September. This item is to confirm and sign the minutes from the last meeting of the committee on the fourth of September as a correct record. Do I have a proposal on second on minutes?
I propose, Chairman, councillor Wotton.
Oh, thank you very much councillor Wotton.
I'll second councillor Bockett.
Thank you very much councillor Bockett. We will now vote on the minutes. You're voting on whether you agree that the minutes are a correct record. So can I now ask all members of the committee to turn on their cameras? If any officers have left their camera on, would you please turn them off? Everybody switched on? Is that everybody, Trina? Can all those in favour please raise their hand so it can be seen?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. Nine in favour.
Thank you. Can all those against please raise their hand?
Can you please? Can the others turn the cameras off? Yeah.
Are we happy with that, Trina?
There's no one against.
No one against, thank you. Can all those abstaining please raise their hand? Please remember.
We've got one abstention, Chairman.
One abstention. Oh, thank you very much. Thank you.
I wasn't at the meeting, so I can't comment.
No, that's fine. Thank you very much.
So there, Karen, Chairman.
Thank you. That's fine. Thank you. That's the minutes agreed. Can I ask members now to turn off their cameras? We'll move on to item four. And this is announced by myself, the executive councillor for adult care, health and children's services and chief officers. I'll just mention that I'd like to remind you that there will be an informal briefing session for members at one thirty today on the high needs transformation strategy. You will need to join the briefing via the link in the one thirty team's appointment, and that has been sent to us by Trina. Due to the size of the agenda today and to manage the length of time everyone is looking at their screens, I'll be announcing a ten minute comfort break at the end of item six. And I think this is important. We do have a break as we're sitting in front of screens for such a period of time. That's the end of my announcements. Are there any executive councillor announcements from councillor Mrs Bradwell, executive councillor for adult health and care?
Just very quickly, Mr Chairman, I know you want to get on. I just wanted to talk about schools and obviously we've had a number of bubbles in schools. I think it was about thirty three schools out of three hundred and fifty five that have had or have, you know, part of a bubble with the virus in. But actually, schools, you know, the bubble shuts down in the school and then very soon after they've self-isolated, they're back in. So I think we are managing that very, very well, actually, within the council and the schools. All credit due to the schools because it's a big thing when, you know, a child comes in or a member of staff. So just wanted to say that, Mr Chairman, we're all, it's all going as well as it can be. We don't want the virus, but I think schools are managing. That's all I wanted to say. And I don't think we've got any real other issues. I think everything's going, working really well. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Bradwell. That's very useful information. I appreciate it. Are there any executive councillor announcements? Anybody else? No? Councillor Brailsford? Chief officer announcements, Heather Sandy, executive director. Any announcements, Heather?
Morning, Chairman. On from me. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. We'll now move on to agenda item five, which is the expansion of Earsby School Spilsby. Just to explain on this one, this item is for pre-decision scrutiny prior to a decision by the leader of the council in the nineteenth and twenty third of October. And I would like to invite Dave Pennington, head of property development, to present this report. We also have Sheridan Dodsworth, head of SEND, and Eileen McMorrow, senior project officer, special schools project in attendance to answer any questions. So it's now over to you, Dave.
Thank you very much, Chairman. I hope you can all hear and see me okay. This paper is the third of, represents the third project in the overall SEND strategy. But I propose now that this scrutiny committee is seeing three reports of this type now. So I proposed this morning just to pick out the salient points for you. And I will assume the committee has read the rest of the paper. Of course, if there are any questions on any of the detail, then please do feel free to ask. But thank you very much, Mr Chairman. This paper this morning is to do with the building communities of specialist provision strategy, which was approved by the executive in November twenty eighteen. And this paper specifically is to do with the third scheme in that overall programme, which is around the expansion of Spilsby. The first two schemes being Boston Endeavour or Boston John Fielding, which was considered earlier this year, and the second scheme was Bourne Willoughby, which this committee considered in July this year. So without further ado, I'll move on. I won't deal with the overall strategy, as you are quite familiar with that now. Just to pick out that, just as a reminder, in bullet point one point five in the paper is, just as a high level reminder, this strategy is providing additional five hundred places to meet the growing demand for special needs. And what this paper is asking you to consider is that we get a contract with Wilmut Dixon, the contractor, using an EU compliant framework. And just as again, as a reminder, Wilmut Dixon are delivering the Bourne scheme. This particular scheme, they're an experienced contractor and brings to the table a lot of experience in delivering these types of schemes. I'll move on to section three, which is page twenty two in your pack, which deals with the scope of works. Tracy, if you've got, there's a couple of images. If you could share those, that would be great. And I'll just talk you through those. They just, the photos help bring it to life a little bit. The Earsby School, we are providing an expansion of capacity from sixty four to eighty four places. And it is worth pointing out, paragraph three point two, that we're future-proofing this scheme as well by providing an additional ten percent capacity above and beyond the immediate need. It's also worth pointing that, that is also, thank you Tracy for that. It is also worth pointing out that in light of Covid, the extra capacity does allow for teaching with social distancing. Although we don't know how long this will go on for, but there is a capacity built within the scheme. I'll go back to that first image, actually, just to describe what you're seeing there, just very briefly. What you're looking at on your screen at the moment is, right in front of you, is the new block. So this scheme is a mixture of internal remodeling and a new block. So to your right hand side, you can see part of the existing school, and then dead ahead, you've got the new block there. And then the other picture that Tracy just showed you is an external view of that new block as well. Paragraph three point five, we're hoping to start on site in January twenty twenty one, with the scheme being completed a year later in January twenty twenty two. The new book block that you're looking at there will provide additional facilities, which will include five classrooms, a new hall, ICT and science spaces, as well as small group rooms, hygiene facilities and staff meeting spaces as well. The existing school, paragraph three point seven, will also undergo extensive remodeling work to provide design technology and an art room, physiotherapy space, visiting spaces for professionals and therapy spaces, a parents' room, hygiene suite, a disabled WC and staff administration of spaces as well. So the school is undergoing quite considerable transformational work. And we're really excited about this project here, as well as the others as well. It's also worth noting that the car park will be extended and remodeled to provide an improved drop off and pickup area and further parking to help force the increase in staff numbers as well. What you're looking at on the picture there is actually a modular design, paragraph three point nine. This means that it will actually be constructed in a factory and then brought to site, this particular element of it. This has several benefits to this particular project. The Spilsby site is exceptionally tight, which would have made constructing this new block using traditional methods really quite difficult. This is the most cost effective method of delivering this expansion. It also limits the amount of destruction on site for the children and for the school, because as it's constructed in this factory, it is quite literally delivered on site and craned and bolted together. It has a very similar feel to traditional build. In fact, you wouldn't notice necessarily when you turn up on site for a school visit that it was modular, but it's just an example of how we're using different techniques to deliver better outcomes for children especially. I'll just move on to the budget for the scheme. This is section four within the paper. The bottom line budget for this scheme is six point five nine million. And I'll just move on to section five, which just to talk to you a little bit about value for money. And just as a note, the last time I came to scrutiny committee, that you requested a little bit more information on the BCIS. And that is catered for in paragraph five point one, which I'll just go through now. And so we use, within corporate property and working with children's services, we use technical expertise with our partners in Kier. And we benchmark all of our schemes against something called the Building Cost Information Service, or what's otherwise referred to as the BCIS indices. This is part of the Royal Institution of Chartered Surveyors. And what it is, is effectively it's a database that collects cost and price information from construction projects across the entire country. What it enables us to do is enables us to benchmark the cost per square metre of what we're delivering against a national benchmark. And what it does is it takes similar buildings of a similar type, and that's where you get the comparison data. The system works by comparing new builds and remodeling. So for the purposes of this paper, in section five point four, what we've done is we've broken the comparison down between the remodeled elements and the new build elements. And what you'll see, paragraph five point four there, the new build side of this scheme compares reasonably favorably with the BCIS indices. We are one thousand, just over one thousand pounds less per square metre in terms of the cost of building this than the BCIS indices indicates. Equally, with the remodeled elements of this scheme, again, we're coming in at four hundred and eleven pounds less than the national average delivering this type of schemes. There are some exclusions to those comparisons, so for the sake of accountability, transparency, what we don't compare is what's known as abnormals. And abnormals are site specific risks which you can't compare with other schemes. So this, for benchmarking purposes, we only compare the new build and the remodeling elements, because it's pretty much impossible to compare the abnormal elements as well. And if you wish to understand that a bit more, that's catered for in paragraph five point three. And just by a way of a further comparison, to give the committee assurance around value for money, paragraph five point eight, we did deliver a new build special school in Gainsborough, which was the One Wood Academy. Again, this scheme compares favorably on a cost per square metre basis with that at three thousand, just over three and a half thousand pounds per square metre, which was the Gainsborough scheme, compared with just over three thousand three hundred per square metre for this particular scheme. Section six of the paper deals with the design approval process. Again, this is the same as the previous two papers that were received by the scrutiny committee. So just the highlights really are that we use guidance set down by the Department for Education. What's known as their guidance documents are called building bulletins. So we've used those to set all of our schemes in children's services. This has been, I would like to stress, actually, this has been a really collaborative approach in how we've worked as a county council with all the academy trusts and the head teachers. So everything that's been agreed and that's been delivered has been agreed by all the head teachers and the academy trusts working with us. And so where we've derogated against some of the guidance, again, that's been with with the agreement of all the head teachers and trusts. But it's also worth making the point that actually, where we have derogated against guidance, we're still, even with the derogations, we are still significantly increasing and enhancing the existing facilities. So what the schools will get at the end of these projects are facilities that everybody can be proud of and that are a significant enhancement, way and above what they have already. I won't tell you more on the design approval process, except just to point out in paragraph six point five that the Senderlines project board has full oversight of the schedule of accommodation. The schedule of accommodation is a document that sets the principles for the design process for the whole programme. And that has been agreed by all parties. I'll just dwell a little bit on cost control, section seven, which is page twenty seven in your pack. Our sales corporate property is we're delivering the construction side of this programme. We work with our partners in Kier and we have quantity surveyors who are technical professionals who scrutinize costs at every stage of the project. It's really important just to make it clear that value for money is something that we take very seriously in conjunction with providing the best possible facilities that we can for these schools. And one of the things we do is we scrutinize the whole process, holding those two elements of good facilities and value for money. So we've made a couple of decisions where we're able to improve value for money without compromising outcomes. An example of that, paragraph seven point three, is where the art and design technology classrooms have been combined. The building bulletin guidance set by the DFE said that there should be two separate classrooms, two separate spaces. What we've done with agreement is actually amalgamated those spaces and combined them. And this has been seen a net reduction of around four hundred thousand pounds per project within the overall programme. That's just one example of where we've delegated away from the guidance. We've maintained the outcomes for schools, but we've taken a really sensible approach in delivering value for money for these particular schemes. It's just worth saying that overall, we believe we have saved against the programme over a million pounds by taking this really sensible approach. I will just move on. The section eight, because I imagine this is probably quite salient and potentially maybe some questions around this, around Covid in particular. This is page twenty eight in your pack. Covid for us, how we're managing Covid and the kind of ongoing risks around that and the potentially Brexit, which is on the horizon as well. Covid nineteen has had a dramatic impact across the construction industry nationally, not just locally. And in fact, we have been reasonably pleased, well, we've been really pleased actually, with how our design process has been able to continue and how construction on site for the scheme in Boston, for example, has continued. I won't steal Eileen's thunder, because I know she's going to deal with this in a subsequent paper. But for this particular scheme, what we've done is we have taken a really sensible approach around what's the risk to do with Covid. So we've taken the experience base from Boston and Bourne, which is a bit further ahead than the scheme. And we've allocated a risk sum of around forty thousand pounds to deal with specific Covid related risks that may happen in the future. Obviously, it's really difficult for us to understand what's going to happen with a second wave, what's going to happen beyond Christmas. Will there be a vaccine? Will there not be a vaccine? So what we've had to do is make a professional judgment based on what we understand to be the risk at the moment around what the impact may be on this project. So we have a really healthy risk pot with this scheme of around about five, just over half a million pounds. That doesn't just cater for Covid. There is a forty thousand pound specific sum for Covid. But the half a million pounds overall risk pot is to cater for things like abnormals, which are unknowns, issues that may open the ground. But that pot could also be used to cater for some other continued Covid items. But one of the things that we do do is where costs, the contractor incurs some Covid related costs, we challenge those at every point and we demand proof that they are a legitimate Covid costs. So that the county council isn't paying any additional costs for anything that isn't directly related to Covid. And in a similar vein, with Brexit as well, it's really, it's even more uncertain. We're not entirely sure how Brexit will impact things. It may not impact in any way whatsoever. So what we have done is we've taken a very pragmatic approach with all of our contractors. And we've negotiated a specific clause in all of the contracts, which basically says they don't have an automatic entitlement past the cost on to the employer, which is the county council, for Brexit related costs. It's an open book contract. If there are any Brexit related costs, they have to demonstrate those to us. And we will challenge those as well. So based on what we know today, I feel reasonably confident that actually this scheme will deliver value for money and that those risks around Covid nineteen and Brexit are well managed. However, there is always an element, as with a global pandemic and Brexit, that there are elements of it being unknown. So we are, we're managing this really closely and quite tightly. And of course, we will port back any progress on a timely basis. That concludes my presentation on the paper, open for any questions or observations. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Dave. Very interesting. Thank you. I'd like to invite members to comment on the report. Councillor Moore, do we have any?
Yes, we have, Chairman. I wondered if I could kick off first with a question, please, if you don't mind. First of all, Dave, thank you very much for the paper and the information provided. It's great to see that this strategy is still progressing despite Covid and the challenges that poses. The question I've got are just about finances to begin with. So first of all, obviously, it's a six million pound budget for this scheme. I've noticed that the school is actually part of a large multi-academy trust, thirty four schools in that trust. And I just wondered why there wasn't a contribution from the map towards this scheme. It isn't shown as being in the budget. And was there, is there a reason behind that? Have we approached the academy for a contribution, given that it benefits them as well as us as the local authority? That might be a question perhaps for Heather rather than yourself, I'm not sure. And secondly, I just wanted to ask about the, and it mentioned on page twenty eight of the agenda pack that the Covid impact, sort of additional and risk funding was only forty thousand pounds. So I just wondered if you could explain what the rationale was behind that forty thousand pound risk budget, if you like. Because that does seem quite low. Thank you.
Okay, thank you councillor Moore. If I take the first part of your question and then I'm sure Dave is better placed to answer the specifics about Covid. So what we've done, as Dave said, we've worked really collaboratively with our multi-academy trusts. It's important to remember that we need to, this is at our request, we're asking them to expand. And they don't have money in their budgets for that expansion. And actually, this school wasn't entitled to receive any of the CIF bids, which is how they would have taken that forward. So what we've done is we've worked with the trust and we've asked where they have got capital funding. And you'll have seen in the other schemes where we have been able to draw down that funding. That's been really positive, but that wasn't possible in this case. And these costs are at our request. If there was funding in the budget for capital, they would. And where they can add to a scheme, schools have been doing that as well.
Thank you. Dave, do you have comments, mate?
Yeah, thank you, Heather. Yeah, just to pick up the second part of your question there, councillor Moore. Yeah, you need to bear in mind that the forty thousand is part of a larger risk pot of five hundred and sixty thousand. So some of the Covid costs we're incurring already. So for example, the site Um so some of the Covid costs we're incurring already. So for example, the site operating facilities have already changed. So as you can imagine, there are social distancing um and measures already in place. Uh we have additionally, additional welfare facilities already in place. And that's all, that's a cost that already sits against the bottom line of of the gross budget of six point five uh million. So the forty thousand pounds really is to cover any eventualities above and beyond uh what we've already costed for. And and you might ask, well, what 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 might that be? So that would be, for example, if the supply chain gets shut down. Um and and a really good example of that could be a bricklaying gang. Um so a bricklaying gang, all it takes is one, one guy to be tested positive and the entire gang is offsite. The contractor then has to resource that uh by finding being an alternative. If there is a cost increase with finding an alternative supplier, then then potentially the risk pot is there to pay for that kind of thing. Those costs tend to be relatively modest, your materials and everything are already budgeted for. So the forty thousand pounds we feel is an appropriate risk allocation based on what we know today. But it does sit within a much larger risk pot of five hundred and sixty thousand. That five hundred and sixty thousand is sliced off into separate chunks if you wish, or unforeseen. And some of those will materialize and inevitably within capital projects, some of those don't materialize. So there is some flexibility within that overall risk pot to move money around again, should we need to, if the Covid costs go beyond where we expect them to.
Thanks, Dave. The risk pot is around about ten percent of the of the construction costs. Is that industry standard or what you'd expect for a scheme like this? Is that, is it based on a percentage or do you actually look at more specific costings?
Yeah, there's a, there's a couple of things that go into identifying a risk pot. Yeah, a broad ten percent is a is a good indicator. But one of the things we actually do is we apply a lot of professional judgment to that as well. So if you were to come and audit our capital projects, for example, you would find that the risk register is costed against separate line items, which say, okay, so. Um uh picking an example, unknown ground conditions is one thing that uh on different projects. Uh Bourne, for example, archaeology is a really big risk. It'll have a specific costed item against it. So that risk, that risk pot, yes, it's it's a combination of factors, a broad percentage. Uh sometimes it's applied, but actually we apply a bit more intelligence to it. So the the risk register is actually costed out.
Thank you, Dave. Councillor Moore, do we have any other speakers?
Yes, we do, chairman. And we've got councillor Whittington, councillor Fido and councillor Linda Wotton.
Thank you very much. Councillor Whittington.
Uh thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um my connection keeps dropping in and out, so if if I go off, I, that means I've lost again. It's been one of our uh recurrent problems we have here in Borough Bay. Um thanks, Dave. Really, really good report. Actually, you can sort of notice now that this third report in this, in the series. Because as we're requesting more and more information to be included, it it's it's going in and reports are sort of, you know, it it, you know. Uh so it's a very, 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 very good report. I haven't, can't really pick up on anything there. I mean, um. I particularly welcome putting in information around the 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 P C I. S index and the importance of it, because I really think provides the context, you know, around the value from early side of things. Uh what I was going to talk about risk, but it's been dealt within your previous reply to councillor Moore, so I won't go there. You you mentioned that the framework that 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 we're using is sort of an EU framework. Post Brexit, are we going to continue to use our framework or is the industry in this country developing its own version of that? Would be my first question. My second one is, I seem to remember that the total budget for all these schemes is about fifteen million pounds. Um I'm just wondering, because this is the third scheme now, what might be useful, perhaps next time you come back. Is if it's possible to provide with a kind of an update as to where all the schemes now are, just just so, just so begin an idea of. What schemes are there against against that fifty million, so we know what's, you know, what's um left to spend. But other than that, a really, really, uh really, really good report. And when you, when you, when you report it through to. Um councillor Hill, um I would really, really push the value from early side of it. Because I think that'd be really important for him when he's making his uh, uh when he's considering the proposal. Thanks, sir. Mr. Chairman. Thanks, Dave.
Councillor Whittington. There's no comp, obviously from Dave on that one necessarily.
I'll just come back on the EU framework, if if that's okay. Yeah, 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 no, that's fine. Um yeah, thank you councillor Whittington for the question. Um. It, the the uh, the reality is that a British lawyer has contributed to a lot of the EU procurement framework. Um uh and actually, the the UK was the main contributor to 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 how all that law was set up in the first way of EU. So from an industry, at the moment, we don't actually anticipate there to be a dramatic change in procurement legislation following Brexit. That's probably one of the things that I I imagine in the short term at least. Um will probably continue. So we'll still continue to procure, not necessarily by an EU compliance framework. Uh but the frameworks will probably change to be a UK standard. But the law and regulation around in that will probably won't change, so the process will probably remain the same. Certainly in the short term, uh it may, it's entirely feasible that in the medium to longer term, that regulation will relax. In some way, shape or form, and obviously we'll take advantage of that where we can.
Thanks, Dave. Thank you very much indeed. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. And councillor Fido. Councillor Fido.
Hello, sorry, can you hear me? Is anyone here?
Yeah, I can hear you. Your question.
Oh, fantastic. Yeah. Yes, my question. Um so I've seen, I've seen, to be fair, um on document. Um where I've done it for that as well, sort of the twentieth century, I think it's absolutely fantastic. Um the potential it has to avoid disruption onsite. Um my question sort of centers around the environmental impact um of the building. And what energy performance measures are being taken in order to make, first of all, the ongoing day to day running costs of the building. Um as low as possible in order to uh reduce the carbon footprint of the building uh going forwards.
Thank you, councillor Fido. Dave?
Yeah, thank you. I, it did cut out a little bit, but I I understand the the sort of the thrust of your question there. In terms of environmental impact and sort of carbon, carbon reduction. Uh with all of these schemes, um we, uh the building regulations in recent years have actually tightened a tremendous amount. So things like thermal performance, things like uh um uh energy performance. Are actually a lot tighter than they even were perhaps five, six, seven years ago. So when, when this this building meets our building regulation standards and and in some ways you think, well, it just makes the standards. Well, actually, standards are very high at the moment. But that means that when we provide a building, you will notice, and in fact, I hope that all of the committee will go around some of these site visits, uh when these schemes are complete. You'll notice that they feel very warm, that they they are very um, they are very energy efficient in terms of how they run, simply because. Technology has moved on in leaps and bounds in the last couple of years and building regulations and the standards have moved up. Um so in in response to your question, in terms of around energy efficiencies, these buildings are very, very energy efficient. Um one of the things we've had to keep uh uh an eye on is the bottom line of of these particular projects. And so things like solar panels, uh we haven't been able to unfortunately, in this particular instance, uh put on, put on the roof of the buildings. However, that doesn't include those from being put on uh in the future. So there is potential in the future to to do more. Uh however, with an eye on the bottom line and uh that's something we haven't been able to incorporate. That doesn't take away from the fact that the buildings are incredibly energy efficient in the first place. Um and the factory, sort of the, the modular element. Um I'll have to come back to you actually in terms of the carbon footprint, because that's not information that I have available at my fingertips. If if the committee are willing, then I can certainly include that as a uh the next report, which will be coming through the next couple of months, I believe. Uh I can certainly provide more information on that in the future.
Yeah, I was gonna say, like, I've seen, like, videos of the the modular design for things. I just think it's absolutely fascinating seeing it come together, almost like. Big Lego blocks really, and I think it's fascinating. And you've answered as well, um my sort of. Premonition of a of a follow up question about expansion for photovoltaic, um you know, generation of electricity in the future, which is fair enough.
Yeah, I just wanted to also make the link to the reduction in transport daily as well. So the the positive environmental consequences of this are also linked to the fact that we won't have children doing really long. Transport journeys at the beginning and end of every day. So some other positives as well.
Yeah, yeah, thank you very much. Thank you. Uh councillor Lyndon Wotton. Councillor Linda Wotton, you have a question?
Thank, thank you, chairman. It's not really a question and unfortunately, I'm not an accountant like my other colleagues, so rest easy, Dave. I just wanted to thank you for your excellent report, so much information in there. And I always love your presentations because you're so enthusiastic about what you do. So I'm sold. And I'm pleased we're pushing on with this at such a difficult time. And I love the idea of the modular building. And I I firmly believe they are supposed to be quite energy efficient. And the the thought and consideration that's gone into things. And I really appreciate the idea that you've collaborated with the staff. And I always firmly believe you should always um talk to the people that actually do the job. Um and that's basically all I have to say, Dave. Thank you very much. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you, councillor Wotton. And I believe councillor Whittington wishes to come back. You have a supplementary question?
No, I think, I think that's Mrs. Miss Chair, I think that's because I I I requested to speak, then lost my connection. And then said, said, I'm back. So I think you've got the, I'm back, as as Arnie would say. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We've got councillor Matthews, chairman, who would like to speak.
Yes, yes, thank, thank you, councillor Moore. Councillor Matthews.
Thanks very much indeed. Um the the report's an excellent report and. What I'm worrying about is the capacity. I'm not worrying, I'm seeking confirmation about the cap, the capacity now and in the future. Because it, E S B is moving to an all, all, all age school. But it's only moving from something like sixty nine to eighty four increased places. So we're adding a whole, all, K S H three and K S H four opportunity into this school. And Neodisia are changing their building policy to put housing into the sort of the walls and those, those, those. How, how long is this increased capacity going to be useful to us? When will the school fill up? I think that, I haven't expressed that very well, but. It doesn't appear we're actually increasing capacity. We're making the school bigger and making it an all age school, but pro rata, there isn't sufficient increase in the number of places to. Match that increased offer i- in my mind. Thanks.
Right. Is is that good for you, Heather, I think?
Yeah, I think, I think probably it is. Thank you, councillor Matthews. So when we were looking at the figures, we did quite a detailed modeling of the projections for specialist provision required in each area. Um and then also we dealt with each area geographically because there are some site limitations. So particularly, E S B school's not an easy one in terms of the site location. So we've looked at that whole area, including some of the schools in Louth as well, to make sure we've got capacity across the piece. And that was in that original strategy, which was a long time ago now. Um but the other work we're doing as well, which is really equally important, is the work we're doing around mainstream schools and how supportive they are. For children with additional needs, to make sure that these specialist provision places are only taken by children who absolutely need them. As you will know, uh the curriculum within specialist provisions, nowhere near the breadth of a mainstream. Uh provision, quite rightly, and we need to make sure that the children who are entering specialist provision and therefore getting a much narrower. Um curriculum entitlement are the right children and that we ensure that we help as many children to thrive in mainstream as we can. And that was a really key driver through the strategy. And that works really progressing well and i- is is getting to an exciting point.
Um Heather, I wonder if, through the chair, is it okay to ask a little more? Uh can you answer the question, when will it be full then? And and how long will it be before it's busting at the seams or will it never, will that never occur? Because.
Well, this particular school will fill. So this particular school is is, the the site is very tight. So there's only so much expansion you can do. And yes, we would want all those places to be taken because we don't want to be building provision that we don't need. So the anticipation is that this school will be full. Um and that we will use that to serve as many children in that area as we can. I think moving forward, the the, if you're saying, will we ever need to build a new provision in that. Part of the um county, at the minute, the numbers aren't indicating that we will need to. The numbers are indicating that with children moving out and children moving in and the work we're doing around the mainstream, we won't need to build new provision in that area. Um but that is something we keep under review, just as we do for mainstream schools. As the population grows, proportionately, our need for specialist provision will grow. At the minute, that's not something that we're seeing as an area of pressure.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you very much, Heather. Councillor Moore, do we have any further speakers?
No further speakers, chairman.
Oh, thank you very much. So that that's all the speakers then. Um just to to recap, the the committee is invited to firstly, consider the report in appendix one and determine whether. The committee support the recommendations to the leader of the council that's out in the report. And secondly, to agree any additional comments be passed on to the leader of the council in relation to this item. And the the recommendations to the leader are set out on page nineteen of the agenda and are as follows. That the leader of the county council, one, approves the scheme appraisal for carrying out works. For the expansion and remodeling of the E S B school Spilsby. And secondly, two, approves the council entering into a construction contract for the said works. With Wilma Dixon Construction via the Skate National Framework. Now, the comments from the committee's discussion on this report have been recorded by Tracy Johnson, senior scoot officer, to be passed on to the leader. So now can I please have a proposer and a seconder to support the recommendations? Can I have a proposer, please?
I'll propose, chairman. Councillor Wotton.
Thank you, councillor Linda Wotton.
I'm happy to second that, chairman.
Ah, thank you councillor Moore. We will now vote on this item. Um and if there are any added members in attendance, this is an education matter. And added members will be entitled to vote on this item. So can I ask all members of the committee to now turn on their cameras, please? And if any officers have left their cameras on, if they could turn them off, please. We've all turned on now, have we? Councillor Matthews.
Hello, sorry.
If if you have your camera on, please.
Yep.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Right, can I ask all those in favour to raise their hand, please?
Everybody's got their hand up, chairman.
Thank you very much. That's unanimous then, yes? Yep.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Um those, those recommendations are supported. Can I ask members now of the committee now to turn your cameras off, please? Thank you very much. We now move on to item six, which is the update on the building communities of specialist provision strategy. Uh this item provides an update on the implementation of the building communities of specialist provision strategy. And the progress made in year two. And I would like to invite Eileen McMorro, senior project officer, special schools project, to present this report. We also have Sheridan Dodsworth, head, head of S E N D, and Dave Pennington, again, head of property development, in attendance to ask any questions. So firstly, it's over to you, Eileen.
Uh thank you, chair. Um I'm hoping that the two items will flow nicely, one into the other, and maybe some of the questions for this one have already been answered. Um so thank you, chair, and thank you to the committee for welcoming back for a second annual update on the building communities of specialist provision strategy. Uh it seems as though you've heard a lot uh from the team working on this programme recently, and that's likely to continue in the coming months. I'll just take a few moments of your time to provide a summary of this report highlighting the key milestones. Which have been achieved and some of the more interesting events which have happened along the way. Perhaps the most challenging aspect of strategic implementation, implementation this year, as with all of the council's activity. Has been the impact of Covid nineteen on the programme. Our special school leaders have experienced unprecedented challenges and have rightly prioritized their Covid response and the safety of their pupils and staff. The construction industry, as Dave has mentioned, has been struck by uncertainty and instability affecting the supply chain and the labour market. And local authority officers and our partners have all had to find new ways of working to ensure that the programme can be progressed and milestones have met. Um and I'm happy to say that we are, we are continuing to make significant progress and very little delay has been caused by the the current pandemic. Um as a, uh the strategy as a whole, you'll be able to see the timeline in your appendix, uh appendix A on page forty three of your pack. Which go, uh which evidences how the schemes are continuing to progress. And where the timeline for construction and implementation um is likely. So hopefully that will give you all an oversight of how things are progressing. Picking up some of the specific schemes where there's been uh significant uh progress so far. I think it's probably worth mentioning as a starting point, the Boston Endeavour Academy. Uh construction commenced in March, just before lockdown. Um but this has managed to remain a live site bar a a couple of days throughout. Um and we even managed to hold a steel signing ceremony on the twenty fifth of September, attended by councillor Bradwell. Uh Dave and representatives from the school and the construction industry partners. Um as you'll see from appendix B, page forty five onwards in your pack, it shows the. it shows the progress made as of late August. Um, but I'm sure Councilor Bradwell will be happy to comment on the the progress made by September, by the time of her visit. Um, the Boston Endeavour scheme is currently projecting a two week delay, but this is obviously dependent on any future lockdowns and the effect of Covid on the construction industry. As members will be aware, Bourne Willoughby Capital Scheme has also been approved through this, uh, through this forum, following recommendation. This new block and remodelling scheme is due to commence construction this month and will complete in August twenty one. There have been some delays to the start of the building work due to Covid restrictions, but also due to the requirement for um further archaeological um, uh, enabling works and ex- and exploration. As a result of some significant historical finds, um, we discovered that they found some very interesting things about Roman settlements in Bourne, I'm, I'm led to believe. Uh, there are some pictures of the findings on page forty nine of your pack in Appendix C for anyone who's particularly interested in the history of Bourne. Um, all of the capital schemes, with the exception of Gosburton House, are, um, have commenced design and feasibility. And it is intended that this scrutiny committee will see a number of schemes presented for capital appraisal in the coming months. Um, Dave and I, if there are any further questions around the capital programme scheme, we'll be happy to address those um when I've completed this section. Outside of the capital programme, the strategy remains on course for successful implementation in the allocated timeframe. The strategic vision for children uh and young people with social, emotional, mental health has now been absorbed in the, in the work of the High Needs Strategy for Lincolnshire, led by Mary Meredith, Service Manager for Inclusion and High Needs Transformation. And I believe that the scrutiny committee are being kept up to date with the work of that, the progress of that, of that uh section. In order for all schools to meet all needs operationally, the support systems of workforce development, health and send design must be established in readiness for implementation. These work streams have made significant progress in the last twelve months. A memorandum of understanding has been approved and established between schools and health providers. Um, to ensure that all children receive a robust health offer. A workforce development model has been proved by our directorate leadership team um, and is due to be implemented in, for all special schools by September twenty twenty one. Um, and the specialist community-led panels are also ready for implement, implementation once our special schools have both capacity and are not prioritising Covid. Uh, all this progress has been made, oh, in addition, sorry, all special schools have signed up to the specialist equipment contract, which will save, um, hopefully save them a large amount of money in terms of the cost of purchasing uh specialist equipment for children and young people with send. Um, this progress has been made against a backdrop of Covid nineteen uncertainty and in an environment where priority has had to be given to educating children in a safe and secure environment. Um, I think it's safe to say that we are happy with the progress made over the last twelve months. The cour- the scheme is still on course to be completed by twenty twenty four. Um, so thank you very much for your time today, and my colleagues and I are happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much. From all our presentations is that it's as business as usual as much as is possible in this very unusual situation. And I think that's a, that's a credit for everyone who's involved. Now, Councilman, do we have any speakers indicating? Yes, we do, Chairman. Council Whittington would like to speak. Thank you, Council Whittington. Council Whittington.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I'm not going to risk my camera until I have to vote because the connection's really dodgy. It dropped out again a few seconds ago. Just a couple of questions, really. The first one is uh on page um six, uh, sorry, my thirty eight. Um, the proposal, the projected need to uh merge Amber Gate and Sandon School in Grantham into sort of one site, so to one hospital, um hospital, one school over two sites. Um, the, the Amber Gates in my patch, um, how is that potentially going to, how, how, um, how would that work? Would it be certain, certain age groups on one side and other age groups on, on another side, or would pupils have to m- move between the two sides?
So, sorry. Sorry, continue, Council.
Sorry, so my first question. My second one is really the question I asked um in the previous item, and I should realise in my notes I should have asked you as part of this. For our update next year, if you could drop a finance schedule with how we're going today, because I think that originally it was fifty million pounds. I think was the original budget. I know we've done three schemes now, so just a running total for, for next year if possible, of just where we are. So we get, get a feel as to how far down the process we are. Um, the third bit is uh relating to the archae- the archaeology that's been found at Bourne. Obviously, I'm a, I'm quite, quite an interest avid local historian as well, my, my, my um, uh hobbies. Um, obviously, as you mentioned, quite significant um archaeological Roman remains have been found. Potentially, I guess, potentially, obviously, while it's fantastic they've been uncovered, potentially has that increased the cost or is that one of the items that, that the risk uh pool would actually pick up the, the risk um uh, budget, budget of the project? And going forward, if we've discovered all this wonderful archaeology, what's going to happen to it? Is it going to just sort of go and be stuck in a basement somewhere? Because I'm just thinking potentially, we've discovered archaeology under a school, could it be used or some of it be used to sort of help the children, help the pupils and kind of learning project, learning resource? Your school is built on this wonderful Roman site. So thanks, Eileen. A very good present, a very good presentation of updates today, but just those three points. Thanks very much indeed, Mr Chair. Thanks, Eileen.
Thank you, Council Whittington. Thank you, Eileen.
Sorry, yes, uh, sorry for diving in there, getting ahead of myself. Um, so just in relation to the Sandon and Amber Gate, if I pick that up, um, and the finance schedules, and then I will pass archaeology um, and aspect of the archaeology over to Dave. Um, so the way that the Sandon and Amber Gate site will be established, so effectively they are a part of the Gant Federation, as you will be already aware. So they are two federated schools with one executive head. So they do operate um effectively as, as close as two schools possibly could in this position already. Um, we, the schools will, will amalgamate and effectively we will build the schedule accommodation, or the schedule accommodation will be built across the two schools. Um, how the school then allocates their children within that is entirely up to the, to the academy trust. However, what we are anticipating is that children with some, with slightly more complex needs will be, will continue to be based at the Sandon site because that is where the therapeutic provisions will be based. Um, and those who are much more likely to access um a wider curriculum and a more challenging curriculum um, will potentially be ac- will be accessing at the Amber Gate site because that is the site that will have the science lab. Um, and that, you know, the, the specialist teaching spaces. But effectively, there may be some movement across the two sites, but that will be on the, that will be the ownership and responsibility of the school. Does that answer your question? But, okay.
Yes, it, yes, it does, Eileen. Thanks, thanks very much. I obviously understand it's, it's a i- i- you know, because i- i- it's a, it's an internal management thing. Um, but obviously, if possible, and, and I appreciate that the two sites will be doing different things. So thank you for that because it helps, it helps me to understand now if any, if any parents or any children, as I said, Amber Gate, which I says in my patch, will approach me. I, at least, at least I can, I've now got the information, I can, I can, I, I can, you know, relay back to them. Thank you.
Lovely, thank you. And yeah, absolutely, in terms of the, the costings and the finance schedule will be included in, in the following year. Um, I think the position at the moment is often, we have, we have confirmed costs of three schools. Uh, but as you, you know, as you're aware, design process, um, and uh costings of, of further schemes are, are regularly reviewed. So by, by, by next year, we should absolutely be able to give you a firmer uh financial position.
Thank you.
Yeah, just, just to add to that, I expect that'll also come through the capital reporting, so that will also come here. So it's making sure we're not bringing multiple reports because one of the things we'll put to executive via scrutiny will be the capital report and Councilor Whittington, which we will show all of that as well.
Thank you for that.
Lovely. And then in terms of the archaeology, I'll just quickly dive in and say that the school have been working really closely with the archaeologists and the contractors already um, around using this as a learning opportunity and, and we, we're hopeful that that will continue. And I'll just pass over to Dave to discuss the risk element around the archaeology.
Yeah, thanks, Eileen, and thanks, Council Whittington. Yeah, the, we understand the finds in Bourne are, they're being termed as nationally significant. Which on one hand is great, on the other hand is a little bit worrying. Um, so, um, so just to put the context around archaeology, because I just think this helps us to understand uh how we manage this as a risk. One of the things around archaeology is obviously we, we do surveys, we do what's known as trial pits, where we, we dig down. We have a look to see if, if, if there is archaeology there, based on advice from colleagues within planning. Um, and when we, when we dig down, we will find some stuff, and that's effectively what we've found already in the surveys. The next stage is, uh, we effectively, when we, when the diggers turn up and they start digging out the whole site, that's when we'll have archaeologists on, um, uh, effectively uh, uh, on watch. Uh, and they will come in and they will have a look at what is being uh, uh, sympathetically dug up at, at the same time, and they'll call a stop to it if they need to. So in terms of how we manage that as a risk, the important thing to understand with archaeology in particular is that until we start digging, no one will truly know the full extent of the archaeology. It's simply not possible to look into the ground and see what's already there, despite all the technology available to our fingertips. So again, like I said to you before, uh, around Covid, uh, we make a professional judgement based on what we know and we understand. Uh, and we have a risk sum allocated within that particular project to deal with archaeology. Now, our, our expectation at this time is that risk sum will cover the extent of the archaeology. Uh, there is a risk, of course, that it could, well, uh, a positive, that it could be under that risk sum. There is a, a, a low risk that it could be over that, but we anticipate at this stage that we can manage it within the overall budget.
Thanks, Dave. I, I always find, I always find archaeology is a real double-edged sword for me because I'm an accountant. Um, and, and, and the support, I'm a support councillor for finance, but I'm also a keen amateur local historian. So on the one hand, I go, wow, Roman finds. And then, and then the accountant part of me goes, oh no, that's going to cost more. So I know it's a double-edged sword for you, Dave. Thanks very much indeed.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Um, do we have any other speakers?
There are no other speakers, Chairman.
Oh, thank you, all the speakers. Recap on the actions required of us as a committee. Um, one, we are required to review and comment on the content of this report and progress made in year two of the implementation. And secondly, to receive an update on year three of implementation in October twenty twenty one, so that's for next year. Can I now ask all members of the committee to turn on their cameras and agree the proposed actions by a show of hands? Again, if any officers have left their cameras on, can you turn them off? I think everyone has, actually. Uh, and Trina will, uh, if you all have your cameras on, please. I think Councilor Matthews is still to come on. Thank you. Can we all show both by hands? Wave your hands. Thank you very much. Is that all right, Trina?
Yeah, that's unanimous, Chairman. That's carried.
Thank, thank you very much. Um, now, those actions are agreed. Uh, we will now have a comfort break for ten minutes and we can resume. It's now eleven oh two. So in ten minutes' time, if anyone can be back promptly, please. And can I ask you now to turn off your cameras and microphones and see you in ten minutes' time? Thank you very much.
Right. Good morning, chairman. Microphone.
Thank you, Trina. Thank you, Trina. And welcome back, everyone, to the second part of this meeting. We do have to confirm the presence of everyone in the second half. So I will ask Trina to invite each member to indicate their attendance. Over to you, Trina.
Thank you, chairman. Okay, councillor Kendrick. Councillor Alexander-Moore.
Present.
Thank you. Councillor Matt Bowles.
Present.
So Mrs Wendy Bockett.
Present.
Councillor Matthew Fido.
Present.
Councillor Julie Killie, is she in? Nope. Councillor Colin Matthews.
Present.
Thank you. Councillor Mark Whittington.
Present.
Councillor Indawattan.
Present.
Thank you. Councillor Ray Wotton.
Present.
Reverend Philip Johnson.
Present.
And Mrs Megan Matchin.
Present.
And we have councillor Patricia Bradwell. And councillor David Brailsford.
I'm still present.
Thank you very much. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you very much. We now move on to item seven on our agenda today, which is the update on the reopening of schools in September this year. This item is to inform the committee about the impact of the Covid nineteen pandemic on schools and education in Lincolnshire. And I'd like to invite Martin Smith, interim director, assistant director, education, to introduce this report. We also have with us Charlotte Gray, acting head of service, children's strategic commissioning, in attendance to explain about the impact on school transport, which of course is an important issue. So over to you, Martin and Charlotte.
Okay, good morning, everybody on the committee. Good to see you all. Thank you for perceiving this paper. I don't intend reading through all the significant pages of the paper, because there are a lot, but hopefully it's provided you with the assurance based on the feedback from the last meeting. But in summary, the paper covers how schools have responded over the summer term with the Covid impact. You can see there as well around the levels of assurance of the work of the local authority and the partnership board in terms of engagement with our schools and providing that central support and direction at times around different materials and numbers of guidance that have come through. You can clearly see that there's been significant pieces of guidance released and impacting on the school delivery. But schools have been tremendously well-engaged and also really calm and pragmatic in their delivery. So in terms of the autumn return, you will be more than well aware that the vast majority of schools reopened on the first of September. No schools said explicitly that they were not reopening in September. And so we've had a really positive start to the term in terms of children being able to access their education. What we have experienced, obviously, are the positive cases of Covid presenting within schools and small outbreaks. And thank you councillor Bradwell for making mention of that earlier. It's probably also worth noting, within those thirty-odd schools that have got positive outbreaks, that we've also had twenty-four schools where they've had a positive case, but then it's ended in terms of isolation and it hasn't continued. So it's probably worth noting, when Covid presents within a school, it doesn't mean it's there for the long term. When we're working through the guidance that was ready for September, we did a lot of time and investment in terms of working with our schools to talk it through, provide the opportunities to ask questions and navigate what they needed to do as next steps. And in the appendices, you can see the different documentation that we shared with our schools to give them a starting point to begin to make the correct plans. Just in summary on the paper as well, you can see that we're now in that recovery stage with schools, acknowledging that Covid will be present for the next few months. We've developed a recover Lincolnshire strategy for our schools to support them with some of the standards issues that they may be faced with, and also an element of supporting leadership directly through a thrive programme. We've worked and developed on the catch-up premium with schools with a number of sessions to make sure that they're using that small amount of funding per child to make sure that they're getting the most out of it and using really well-based, evidence-based research to implement that. We've also done some guidance around remote learning. So for those children who are isolating or small groups of children who are isolating, then the schools have been supported to transition to a remote learning platform and making sure that they've got the right kind of plans in place to be able to meet the needs and give some continuity to education. Outside of this report, at the end of the report, I did say I'd be able to give you a more accurate update because of the time scales. So I've been really pleased with our school attendance. I can confirm to the scrutiny committee that our attendance is above East Midlands and national averages. We have around ninety-one point five percent of children in school on average. I will put a caveat on that in that the data is based on a daily DFE survey return. Not all schools have completed that by the deadline each day, but we've reminded them and we've followed those up with individual schools. And it's also impacted by the fact that we now are including independent schools within that dataset. So quite often we talk about three hundred and sixty-five schools in Lincolnshire. This is based on three hundred and ninety schools. We talk daily with Ofsted and with the DFE around any ongoing issues and challenges. And that's been really helpful and positive with working with those organisations. Just for information, in terms of recovery, you may or may not be aware that Ofsted are recommencing interim visits this autumn term. These autumn term visits are not inspections. They don't result in a grade. They don't result in anything of normal routines in terms of reports. The purpose of those one-day visits is to gather information from schools to provide into a central report for central government to get an understanding of what the long-term implications of Covid are on school life and school settings. At the minute, it looks like Ofsted inspections will resume in January, subject to Ofsted's risk assessment. That's when formal inspections will resume and Ofsted gradings will be given. Also, in terms of assessments, we get many questions from our schools around what does the outlook for assessments look like. At this time, the intention and the policy still remains that assessments in twenty twenty one will take place. But of course, this is subject to a termly review. And what I would also like to just celebrate with our schools is that they've been really well supported by the local authority, but also our health protection team in terms of managing Covid responses. And the feedback from our schools about the work of the local authority and health protection has been overwhelmingly positive. We've received hundreds of emails and letters to say thank you so much for our support. So I'm hoping that that gives you an overview of where we're at. Things seem very stable at the moment. We're meeting regularly with our head teachers once a month in the form of leadership briefings. Like I say, they're working really calmly and pragmatically and being very responsive to the emerging needs and requests of the local authority upon them. And at that point, I'll just pause, if it's okay, chairman, to offer Charlotte Gray to give an input on the school transport side of things.
Thank you, Martin. Yes, Charlotte, if you can update us on school transport, please.
Good morning, everybody. We think the return to school and education transport has gone reasonably well in Lincolnshire. I think when we've spoken to other regional colleagues and Martin, who's had conversations with the Department for Education as well, we feel as though we've done really well compared to other colleagues in the region in terms of education transport. We did receive an unprecedented number of applications after the school term had commenced, which is quite unusual. We think that parents were waiting really to understand what was happening with school transport from central government guidance, which was released really quite late in order to determine whether they were going to apply for transport for their children. So that did cause a bit of a delay in terms of going through those applications. But really, that was because we were still getting over two hundred applications a day well into the new term. But I'm pleased to say that we've processed all applications and we're up to date. And Transport Services Group are working really hard now to make sure that all of those children who are entitled as quickly as possible have had their seat on transport confirmed, et cetera. We received a grant from the government in August and it was for use for up to October half term. And that was about trying to make sure that children and young people who were using public transport in particular to get to school, where social distancing measures still apply, that there was capacity and that they were able to get on vehicles or that they could use dedicated school transport. So Transport Services Group, again, have worked really hard with operators in the county. They've converted over a hundred public transport vehicles into dedicated school transport vehicles so that children are able to travel to school without mixing with the general public. And they've also put on over thirty-five extra vehicles as well on routes where we've had a lot of children travelling to further aid social distancing. They're continuing to use the government grant where we have capacity in the market to further put extra capacity into the system. So we're really pleased that we've been able to do that because our scrutiny committee will be aware we don't have an excessive amount of extra vehicles available to us. So it's been literally all hands on deck, trying to make sure we can do what we can to keep children safe when they're travelling as distant as possible. We've put out a lot of communication to families, to operators around our infection prevention control measures. And I think generally speaking, it's been really positive. We've seen that children and schools have been really compliant with our infection prevention control measures. We have had some cases where we've had children that have tested positive for Covid nineteen that have used school transport. But we also have worked incredibly closely with the health protection team to very quickly, and schools, to quickly identify where those children have sat and what then needs to happen in terms of close contact, deep cleaning of vehicles, et cetera. And I have to say, we've probably had in total so far this term less than twenty cases of children where they've travelled on transport and been positive. So that's sort of where we are currently. And yeah, so all in all, I think it's gone quite well and I've got nothing further to add at this point. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Charlotte. I can appreciate it being a very tough role for people in your department. And thank you for that you do. Now, we're going to move on to questions, but I would just like to, if I may, just ask a question of Martin. You mentioned the figure, which is obviously very encouraging. It's well above all the other indices in terms of East Midlands and national of ninety-one point five. I was just wondering how that actually works out in numbers of children.
Yes, thank you, Chair. So that would be in the region if our total cohort's approximately a hundred and ten thousand children in Lincolnshire in statutory school age education. So we'd be looking in the region of ninety-six, ninety-seven thousand pupils are actually back in the building on average. Yeah.
Thank you very much. Councillor Moore, do we have any speakers? Anybody wishing to ask a question?
We do, chairman. I wondered if I could just ask a quick question first, please. But I'll start off, I just want to thank Charlotte, who has been involved in an issue in my area. There's only been one issue that I've been notified of in the village of Fossen. And the county council and Charlotte's team got an extra bus, dedicated bus, put on within a matter of days. So I just wanted to note that within this meeting and thank you for your active work that you did. Parents really, really happy that we resolved that. And the issue was actually overcapacity on the bus and people having to stand on the bus to go down the A1. So it was very pleasing that that resolved quickly. And the question I've got really is about, we've had seven hundred and twelve thousand pounds of extra funding to cope with these cost pressures. I just wondered if you could tell us, please, what you think the overspend or underspend might be that we'll have to fund for our own sort of base budget.
Thank you. In terms of the additional pressures in relation to the extra transport, that won't impact on our overall, our sort of normal transport budget because we're basically using what we have available within that grant to fund those extra vehicles. And I think that we will manage within the grant that we have and the capacity that we have available to do what we can, basically. If that answers your question.
It does. Thank you. And chairman, would you like the other speakers now?
Yes, please, councillor Moore.
So we've got councillor Ray Wotton, councillor Mark Whittington and councillor Colin Matthews.
Thank you. Councillor Ray Wotton, if you'd like to ask your question, please.
Thank you, chair. It's not particularly a question. It's a comment, really. Because although I welcome children returning to school, locally, we've had two academies and two primary schools been affected. And I've been really concerned about the lack of responsibility by older children regarding social distancing and the wearing of masks in local shops. So much so that I had to contact the local head of one of the schools to remind them of their responsibility, not only to themselves, but also to the neighbouring residents that live in the area who are still shielding. And I don't know how we get that message across that they need to act responsible. Thank you, chairman.
Any comments from Martin and Charlotte?
I'll respond if that's okay, chair. So leadership briefings and all of our sessions, we very much reinforce and talk about messaging and communication, not only within the school site, but also, you know, within their community. I think leaders are very clear to that duty of conveying those messages. Obviously, the challenge is trying to enforce this once children have left the premises or moved off-site. But certainly, we've got mechanisms to be able to highlight and notify those kind of issues with schools, similar to how you addressed the issue that you experienced, so that we can pick up, reinforce and re-engage where those messages need to be given. And I know, Charlotte, we've done very much similarly for school transport. I don't know if you want to comment on that as well.
Yeah, absolutely. So what we've asked operators to do, where we've had children who have been travelling on vehicles, they might have worn a face covering, and then when the vehicle's moved off school site, remove the face covering. We've had quite a high number of concerns raised by operators of that happening. And I have to say, I've personally been speaking to And I have to say, I've personally been speaking to head teachers and senior leadership teams within those schools where that's been reported. And in every single instance, the schools have worked to, you know, they've specifically gone to parents and children who've been travelling on the vehicles and reminded them and said to them that they need to be wearing face coverings if they're able to do so. And I think that schools have been really supportive and they've been reported that we've had better compliance. So, yeah, we're having to deal with it on a case by case basis, but I I think that schools are really working with us on that one.
Yeah, Chairman, if I could come back, it's not only the the older students, it's their parents as well. Because if the parents don't set example, the children won't follow. And it just explodes. I've had cause known to challenge children that wear masks. I've also last week challenged two adults in a local store and one said, my mask is in the car. So I said, well, go and get it then. It's a responsibility. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Whitton. And I believe councillor Whittington, you have a question.
Yes, thanks, thanks, Mr. Chairman. Thanks, thanks, Martin, Charlotte. The update I found really useful. I've got several questions. First one really is around the percentage rate that's that's returned so far. And Martin, you said it's, if I remember right, 91.5%, which is about 97,000 pupils of 110 we've got. First part of that question is how does that sort of compare normally? I mean, you know, pre-Covid, what percentage of children would we expect to see in school? So, you know, how far below or away from from the normal are we? And my second question is kind of related to that around this. Because I know that a number of parents still have concerns about sending their children back to school. And I know that, I mean, what's the general policy now regarding the fining regime if parents don't send their children to school? I mean, obviously, if parents have got real concerns, it becomes a question of do you find them or not? But what can you do to try and encourage parents who have got health concerns to sort of get their children back into school? And sort of what, you know, are we fining or not? Or what are we doing? And around this also as well, I picked up and read in the paper a week or so ago that the 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 level of homeschooling seems to be on the increase. And maybe parents who've got concerns about sending their children back to school. But I'm just obviously then have concerns that parents may be sort of keeping children off school and saying, oh, we're homeschooling them. But the reality is they're not. I'm just wondering what we can do to ensure that children that are off school and the parents have said, oh, homeschooling, what we can do to sort of make sure that homeschool is actually taking place? Because imagine what's a really big drain on resources if we have to sort of go around every single parent who's doing that. So so around that, and those are my questions really, I guess, for you around that. And I've got just one question possibly that maybe Charlotte could pick up around the school transport. And that is this old issue of social distancing of children on buses and the wearing face masks. Just if Charlotte can sort of maybe just give a bit of an update on, you know, what kind of social distancing do we insist upon on buses? And I know councillor Wooton's raised the issue of children wearing face masks on buses. I mean, what do we, I mean, do we, I mean, obviously, I guess it's the individual responsibility of the parent to make sure their child's got a face mask. But have we got, you know, do the operators have a box of disposable face masks on buses? Just in case a child genuinely genuinely comes and says, oh, sorry, I forgot my face mask. Just so just something around that. So thanks, thanks, Martin, Charlotte, and thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Whitton. Martin.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, councillor Whittington, for your questions there. So in terms of live attendance data, we don't have comparative data, you know, what it would look like in September. What we do have is annual attendance averages. And the most recent annual attendance average was around 93, 94% for attendance in an annual year. The expectation is, of course, to be 95% and above. But we're not a million miles away when you overlay Covid and possible anxieties around school attendance. So you're absolutely right, 91.5 on average today, but an annual comparison would be around the 93, 94% mark. I think the system has done a good job in terms of attendance of trying to reinforce and give positive messages and confidence to families and young people about the return to school. Certainly, the feedback from schools and families that I've been in touch with has been they welcome a return to some kind of routine, noting all of the risks, but certainly feel beneficial to be re-engaging with education. In terms of your point around elective home education, obviously, sorry, I missed the first one actually. The fining element that you talked about, obviously, as an approach for local authority, we administer the process of school attendance orders and fining. But it's for schools to use all endeavors to encourage their children and young people to return back. The only time the local authority is then engaged is when they make the referral through to us to begin the process of that legal process of school attendance orders. So schools are very much trying to nurture and encourage and build confidence with those children and young people and will only come to us when they feel that that's absolutely exhausted and necessary. In terms of elective home education, you're absolutely right. In the media and nationally, elective home education numbers have increased as a parental right, and it is a parental right to choose that option. We've discussed that with our individual schools as well to make sure that they're making families aware of what elective home education is, what are the demands upon them, what are the processes, et cetera. And schools are very familiar with that in terms of communicating with their families. So, yeah, we're working on it. And I do believe, I could see Tracey's put a comment into the chat that an elective home education report, a full report, will be coming through in the November meeting to substantiate some of that process in detail. Hopefully, that answered your question. And I'll hand over to Charlotte for your transport query.
Thanks, Martin. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So if I take social distancing first. So we have children that travel on dedicated school transport and we have children that travel on public transport, where effectively we pay for their ticket. On public transport, social distancing measures are still in place. And this is the large reason why the government have provided that extra grant, because effectively it could mean that children wouldn't be able to get onto a bus because there aren't enough seats available because of the social distancing measures. And that's been a lot of the work that we've put in place to make sure that we've got additional vehicles on those routes so that we know that children can get to school. When it comes to dedicated school transport, social distancing doesn't apply in the same way. So the government's guidance is that children should socially distance on dedicated school transport where it's possible. But as I'm sure you all understand, within the vehicles that we have in Lincolnshire and the limited supply, we simply don't have enough capacity to be able to support social distancing across the entire dedicated school transport network. So what we've been doing to try and improve things locally is working really hard, first of all, with parents to say, please don't put your children on dedicated school transport or public transport if you have other means to get your child to school yourself, regardless of whether they're entitled. So that helps us with distancing. What we've also then done is we've asked operators to put in place systems of separating children. So we've asked children, for example, if we've got vehicles that carry more than one school in a double decker, for example, we'd ask that different pupils sit on different decks. We also asked that children sit within their bubbles on vehicles. And we've found where we've had then positive cases of children travelling, but we've had, say, different bubbles in different schools, that hasn't then caused the subsequent isolation of those children, you know, in terms of the advice from public health. Then, in terms of face covering, so it's similar really. Face covering is a mandatory on public transport, but they are recommended on dedicated school transport. It's not a mandatory requirement. But as a local authority, we have said to the children of all ages should be wearing face coverings on school transport unless they are medically exempt. And that's been incredibly well supported by and large. I think you're right. What has happened is we've said to operators that they should all carry a spare box of face coverings that can be offered to children. And the council has supported operators with a grant to for increased force and PPA and increased cleaning materials, because all vehicles have to be deep cleaned every evening and cleaned in between journeys as well on key touch points. So I think we're doing everything that we can around social distancing and face covering.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Charlotte. Thank you very much indeed, Charlotte. Thank you.
Thank you. Before I move on to the next question, I'd just like to follow up on the point that Martin made about the elective home education. Just to remind members that we will have a report on that, a meeting on the 20th of November. So that's the 20th of November when we'll have a report on that. Now councillor Matthews, I believe you wish to ask a question. Councillor Matthews?
Thank you, Chair. I'm not as hot on my button as you are. It's not a question. It's a thank you to Heather and to Mark Rainey. And it is about school transport. I've had a quite a worried constituent who's asked about her child and was very anxious about this. And I was able to be reassured that all steps are being taken. Now, the reality is that we've put an extra bus on, or the county council put an extra bus on, and that's been very helpful. The hint was that it's not likely to continue beyond October, which seems, you know, a bit short sighted because the virus isn't going to stop then. But it's clear that as we bus people from the east coast into Alford, where there are four schools, that we're cramming the children onto the buses. Now, this additional buses have been able to at least create a bubble where one one school has one set of one bus has pupils for one school, another bus has pupils for another school. And that's vastly improved the situation. So it's a big thank you, but just a plea that hopefully it can continue till this situation's cracked. Thank you.
Charlotte?
Yes, just in terms of the funding. So I had a telephone call earlier in the week with the Department for Education and I'm expecting them to announce on Monday that we will receive an extension of the grant funding until Christmas. It's not been finally confirmed and we don't know what amount that will definitely be. But it'll be based on the money that we've spent on transport. So I'm confident that it will be there until Christmas and then I think they're just having to wait and see how things go. If we're in the same situation, I imagine it will have to extend beyond that.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Charlotte. That's very useful information. councillor Moore, do we have any other questions? No other speakers, Chairman. No other speakers.
Sorry, Chairman. It's Heather Sunday. I just wanted to add to Charlotte's response to councillor Matthews and to comments made earlier expressing thanks to the teams. I really feel these teams have worked through unprecedented times with their interaction with schools and transport. And they're relatively small teams dealing with huge numbers of organisations. And they really have worked round the clock. So I just really appreciate the feedback from people to say thank you for those teams because they've worked really hard and it's nice to get that feedback. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Heather. I'm sure the whole committee would join with me in thanking the staff and all the departments that have worked on this for their dedication in dealing with something which is totally unprecedented, to use that well worn phrase. But I mean, at the beginning of the year, we'd never known that we'd have to do all this. So yes, I'd like that noted, please, that our gratitude has been shown. Thank you very much. Now, if I can just move on to the actions required by the committee. They are to review and comment on the information within the report and seek clarification around the reopening of schools. And can I ask all members of the committee now to turn on their cameras and agree the proposed actions by a show of hands? Everyone on?
We're one short, are we? One, two, three, four, seven. Yeah, that's unanimous, Chairman.
Thank you very much, Trina. Thank you. That's the actions agreed. If you've left your camera on, could you please turn it off now? Thank you very much. And we move on to agenda item eight now, which is the inclusive Lincolnshire strategy policy review. Now, this item provides an update on the progress of the inclusive Lincolnshire strategy. And I'd like to invite Mary Meredith, Service Manager, Inclusion and High Need Strategy, to present this report. So it's over to you, Mary.
Thank you very much, Chairman, and morning, everyone. Yes, you've got the report in front of you presumably. Just to start with the background, you'll be very aware that Lincolnshire was the highest excluder of children in the country, pre-inclusive Lincolnshire strategy. A key priority for the local authority was to address that. And so this report shows really the impact of the strategy to date. Going over the strategy, probably not necessarily, but but just to recap very briefly, at its heart is the ladder of intervention, which is now very much part of the landscape in Lincolnshire schools. It's a stepped approach to behavioural intervention. So we ask schools to produce a PSP plan to support children before they then access our BOSS service, our behaviour outreach support service. And they can also access intervention places within our alternative provision partners, but only if they've first gone through the steps of making the plan and engaging BOSS. So it's a ladder that holds schools to account really at every step. And the core role now of the pupil reintegration team is to do that holding to account at each step, whilst also maintaining the relationships which really are what we depend on for all of this to work. Because it's all voluntary after all. We don't have any real control over what schools do at the end of the day. So we're grateful for their buy-in. That's fundamental. Moving on to conclusions, I think we can go there. I've written a little bit more about the sort of branches to the strategy that have developed over time. For your information, I can answer any questions about those later, if necessary. But in order to be succinct, I think we can move to conclusions and some figures there around the impact of the strategy. So in figure one, you can see that there has been a significant reduction in permanent exclusion since 2015-16. If you look at the totals row down at the bottom there. Comparing primary and secondary performance on this measure, you can see a clear difference. The response has been much more emphatic from the primary sector. But it is fair to say that there was a step change, the step change we'd been waiting for really from secondary schools last year, a very significant reduction in their rate of permanent exclusion. I just think that it was harder work to secure that engagement from from secondary schools, but it's come now. Hence that reduction. Now, obviously, last year, 1920 was truncated because of lockdown. But I just want to highlight through figure two that the reduction was genuine in the sense that if we just compare performance up to the point of lockdown over the previous years, then you can see that the reduction there was 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 real. It wasn't, we're not just looking at the lockdown factor, in other words. Most exclusions actually happen before Christmas, just before the January census. Slightly more sophisticated numbers in figure three, these are from the performance team. Having interrogated the data, they identified an overall rate of permanent exclusion of 0.06 in 1919-20. Our target was 0.11, so we were well below target. And that is because of the change that we saw from secondary schools, which was very welcome but not necessarily predicted. Moving on to figure four, we've got here the national exclusions map. And for the first time since exclusions maps were produced, Lincolnshire is in the second to lowest band, which is lovely to see. I used to dread the publication of that map, but now it's something to celebrate. And in figure five, we have, for the first time actually this year in that DFE report, a fixed term exclusions map. And there, Lincolnshire is already lowest band. If you look at figure six, you can see that we are lowest band because of, again, a real change. So elsewhere, you see FTEs very much on the rise and And Lincolnshire is booking that trend nationally and regionally by reducing the fixed term rate, which is really interesting and I think very encouraging. There's high level concern at the DFE about the rising fixed term rate. And they're seeing it especially in the north actually, which is interesting. So something very different happening in Lincolnshire, something I think that we should be celebrating. And I suppose my final remarks are that this is very much an ongoing campaign. It's not just that schools have kind of changed their minds about exclusion and we can focus on something else now. They're really engaged with all the resources available to them. So for example, BOSS accepted four hundred and forty-four referrals last year. They delivered a hundred and thirty-one training sessions in schools over the course of the year. And the PRT at the time of lockdown had two hundred and sixty-five cases open. So the change we're seeing is the result of a lot of hard work, a lot of engagement from the sector. And that does need to continue, otherwise, you know, we could see some slippage. So that, very briefly, is, is the report. Nothing really to vote on here, just an update on where we're at with the strategy. I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much Mary. It must be very gratifying to see the direction of travel being in the right way. And I don't know what I saw in the report, but do we get people from other parts of the country coming to learn how we've achieved this?
Increasingly, yes, yeah. There's lots of interest from different local authorities. Family Action who deliver the BOSS service is doing quite well out of that, I think, actually.
Thank you very much. Councillor Moore, do we have any members who wish to ask a question?
Yes, we do Chairman. Councillor Whittington would like to speak.
Thank you very much. Councillor Whittington, over to you.
Thanks Mr Chairman, and thanks Mary for the report. I think it's really positive, good news. There were actually, you know, this intervention, this new strategy seems to be working. You can see it in the numbers, it's fantastic. So many congratulations to everybody who's been involved in this. The only real question I've got is obviously, it's fantastic the numbers of excluding, excluding are now down, you know, to sixty-three. And as we've heard from Martin, the previous question said, there's hundred and ten thousand pupils in Lincolnshire. So and as, and as you, as the stats say, that's naught point naught six percent, which is brilliant. The question is, what happens to the sixty-three? Because when, do, do these figures include, because I understand, do the figures of special schools, do they include the they used to be called pupil referral units, didn't they? I'm just wondering what happens to the sixty-three? Because it's not that many, but obviously we've still got to make some provision for them. And possibly if they've been permanently excluded from one school, can they then be potentially reintegrated back into another school? If they have, if they have some specialist in, in, in intervention work or something. So thanks, thanks, thanks Mr Chair, thank you.
Yeah, I can pick that up. So you're referring there to sixth day provision. So all local authorities have a duty to provide full-time education after six days of a permanent exclusion. In Lincolnshire, we delegate that duty to our partners Springwell Academy of Springwell Free Schools. And they provide sixth day provision by and large, although we do have a more recent partnership with Build a Future who pick up some of our key stage four permanently excluded young people. It's always a tragedy for me, a permanent exclusion, but I can say that they get a really good offer in Lincolnshire. Much better than we've had in the past. Springwell have done amazing work in the sense that they inherited a very broken setting in the Teaching and Learning Centre. The local authority, you know, made this sort of brave decision to really invest in, in doing something. You know, prioritising that. And I don't know if you've seen the free schools across the counties, four spanking new free schools that, that came to us at no cost to the local authority through the partnership with Springwell and Wellspring more broadly. And they are wonderful learning environments. And actually, it's been interesting to see the impact of those environments on the learners. They, you know, they, they do, do feel well looked after. They're really calm, therapeutic settings, everything you'd want actually, from the highest quality alternative provision. So Ofsted are due back there soon, but I think we can really be optimistic about what Ofsted say and how they'll judge those settings. I, I just love to visit them. They're very, as I say, very therapeutic, very calm, and leadership really knows what they're doing. And so it's a good story.
If I may, Mr Chair, can I just come back on that? Because, because, because as soon as you mentioned Springwell have picked up for the sixty-three. My, my next question was going to be, does that mean all the children have to travel to one site? But then you said there's four sites. Could you just, could you just let me know the location of those four sites if possible?
Yes, certainly. We've got Spalding, Mayberthorpe, Grantham and Lincoln.
Thanks, thanks, thanks Mary. It helps to provide the context. So realistically, there's always a, a relatively local school where a permanently excluded child can be educated.
Yes, and I didn't pick up your point about going to another mainstream school. It's important to acknowledge that's always the goal. So we want the very best sixth day provision, but we don't want children to stay in alternative provision. For the reasons really that Heather highlighted in relation to special schools, outcomes are better for children in mainstream. So that's where we need to get them back. And, and, and that's the goal of the intervention. Except key stage four, they by and large stay within the alternative provisions because they often start vocational pathways and it wouldn't be in their best interests to disrupt those and try to pick up GCSEs again. Sometimes school, school isn't the right place for those at the end of the day.
Thanks, thanks. Yeah, I guess that's all my questions. Thanks Tom, Mr Chair, thank you.
Thank you councillor Whittington. I understand councillor Bradwell wishes to speak. Councillor Bradwell?
Yes, Mr Chair, and I know I've been very quiet this morning, so sorry about that. No, I just want to say, because I've been here a while, I seem to think I'm getting really old because I've been here a while. But I do remember the days when exclusions were literally spiralling out of control. And it did feel at some point, you know, we brought Mary in to help us. And, you know, we got a team, but it did feel, you know, that we, schools were not, you know, sort of working with us. I think we've got an absolutely great strategy. And that with Mary and with the whole team, I remember Heather was around as well when we started this. You know, everybody is working together. And I think, you know, schools, from where we were to where we are now, schools are very proactive in trying to help. As if they have a child that, you know, is on the cusp of being excluded. And because now we've got our partner who we've spoken about Wellspring, I mean, they came on board. And as Mary said, we've got four brand new buildings where young people can go for a very short while to, and then get them integrated back into mainstream schools. So, you know, this is something I am very proud of. And I'm proud of the officers who, you know, it isn't easy when a child is actually it will, there will be a reason why the child is kicking off and doesn't want to go to school. It might be something in their family that's happening, you know, you never know. But it is something, and I would suggest, when we get out of this horrible Covid situation. Is somewhere that members might want to just go and have a look at in very small groups, you know, Wellspring and that. Really, really, you know, you come away blown away by what they're doing with these troubled young people, they are at times. But we, we tried to get them back from being, we tried to get them back being happy and, you know, content. So that's all I want to say, Mr Chair, and it is a great, great story what's happened here.
Okay.
No, no, just, just grateful again for the positive feedback. The teams worked really hard, so it's, it's really lovely to get that feedback. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, I, I think once again, we have another very positive story to tell. Things in Lincolnshire and I think it's very, very, very encouraging. As members have mentioned, hopefully when we see the back of Covid, we'll be able to go out and visit a, a, a number of these settings. Various reasons, the new schools that have been built and also the existing provision for excluded pupils. I, I think this is, it's great and I look forward to being able to go and visit them in due course, conditions permitting. Councillor Moore, do we have any further questioners please?
No Chairman, there are no other speakers.
Thank, thank, thank you very much. The actions required of us as a committee are to consider the content of the report and provide feedback and challenges required. Can I ask all members of the committee to turn on their cameras and agree the proposed actions by a show of hands? And if any officers have their cameras on, if I could ask them to turn them off please? Trina?
Unanimous. Unanimous.
Thank you very much, thank you. Those actions are agreed. And if any members now have left cameras on, if you could please turn them off. And thanks again to Mary for that very encouraging report. Now we can move on to item nine, which is the local area SEND inspection Ofsted and the care quality permission, update on the action plan. Now, this item provides an update on the action plan last presented to the committee in July twenty nineteen following a joint local area SEND inspection by Ofsted and the CQC in October twenty eighteen. And I'd like to invite Sheridan Dodsworth, Head of SEND, to present his report. Over to you Sheridan.
Thank you Chairman, good morning everybody, or just into the afternoon maybe now. Yes, this is the second update that we've given since our inspection in two thousand and eighteen. And I thought probably what was best this morning was to focus on the areas that we've still got some work to do. So we had ten actions that came out of the joint area inspection. And six of those actions are now green. And you'll have seen in the appendix, which is outlining the progress that we've made, that some of those greens are, they're things that, that they don't stand still. So although they're green, they are ongoing pieces of work as well. But I thought what would be helpful is just to focus on those elements that are still at amber in terms of our RAG rating. And just give you an update on where we are with those. And you'll see a bit of a common theme that you've heard throughout the morning. The four actions here have all been, had an impact, Covid's had an impact on the progress of all of them. But essentially, the ones that we're still doing some work around are the proportion of children identified with moderate learning difficulties in Lincolnshire. I think you've heard on a number of occasions in different, in different reports that we've presented. We do have a high number of children in Lincolnshire identified with moderate learning difficulty. And we have been able to identify that sometimes that's a lack of understanding about what that, what, what, what that actually means. So the work to date has really focused on a rewrite of some of those descriptors so that we can help settings to understand what, what, what constitutes a moderate learning difficulty. And we've now made some changes to our internal systems around the way in which we record need so that we've got more accurate data around, around need. And the whole of the education health and care plan format is also now more accurately capturing both the need as identified in the code of practice, but also that primary need. So some of the specific things that you hear about, like things called moderate learning difficulties and specific learning difficulties. So there has been a delay because of Covid in rolling out the descriptors. But we decided that our specialist teachers who work for the local authority are trialling some of that this term just to make sure that there are no unintended consequences of sort of firming up what we're doing. So I think we've made good progress and we'd have liked to have been a bit further on to where we are now. But we're hoping that that will be concluded by March twenty twenty-one. In terms of the second one, where we've got an amber, that was around improving the health information and the outcomes that we put into education, health and care plans that come from health reports. We had a very successful audit undertaken by public health colleagues. And our partners in health have really embraced that and are doing some work to make sure that clinicians are better informed about how they write outcomes. So that it's clear about what we're trying, when there's a health intervention, what are we actually trying to achieve? We are introducing an electronic hub, which again, I think I've talked about previously. And that will also provide consistency in the way all agencies actually report outcomes. That was due to go live earlier than in September, but because of Covid, that's been put back and we hope that will go live in January. But that will also support this particular piece of work. In terms of the local offer, I don't propose to talk very much about that because I reported on it through the transitions work and that some elected members were involved in. But suffice to say, we've done a lot of work around reviewing the content of the local offer. Looking at the use of the local offer, the things that public and professionals find most useful, what they're accessing. Young people have developed some videos to help signpost around the local offer. And we are actually presenting in the new year to scrutiny some of those videos that you can see what young people have done to enhance the local offer. So that is an ongoing piece of work, but I think we've actually made quite a lot of progress over the lockdown. In, in, as, as well as, you know, some of the things that have hindered it in terms of public engagement, we've actually managed to make quite a bit of progress. And then last but not least, we needed to improve waiting times for children that were requiring neurodevelopmental or autism diagnoses. There was some really successful work done prior to lockdown, which was reducing the timescales. We had developed a compliant, our health colleagues in particular had been developing a nice compliant pathway for neurodevelopmental diagnosis. There was some psychology input that was much needed, that had been identified. And they were really starting to get to a point of designing the behavioural and, and neurodevelopmental hub, which was a multi-agency hub aimed at supporting a wide range of people seeking advice about this. Covid has had a, a, an impact on this, there is no doubt about that. A lot of our health colleagues have been redeployed to support the pandemic. And although there's a triage process that continues, no autism assessments have taken place since March, which obviously is a concern. There have been issues around access to psychology as well, which, which, which also further compounds that. But I would want to emphasise that actually this is identified as significant risk. The clinical commissioning group are well aware of the risk, as is the local authority. So it's a real shame that some of that, that really strong progress has been hampered by Covid nineteen. But, but hopefully you can see that, you know, work, it hasn't been, it hasn't been sort of abandoned. It's work that is on temporary hold at the moment. I think that just about summarises our position, so I'm happy to take any questions.
Very much Sheridan. Councillor Moore, do we have any questions? I see councillor Whittington wishes to speak. Councillor Whittington?
Thank you Mr Chairman, thanks Sheridan for the report. And it, it's good to see that we're making good progress against those action points. I just want to, I've got three questions or just three points of clarification. The first one is on the children with moderate LD. Because we're hearing again in the media that, you know, children have had some disruption now to their education for six months. And obviously it's going to take children, especially if they've just started school, time to sort of, you know, get caught up. And I'm just wondering if, if that potentially might have an impact on pupils being identified as having moderate learning difficulties, because they may have, or it may just be that because of education, they're just ready for six months. That they may need to catch up. So I'm just wondering how, how that can be managed. You know, to sort of allow the flexibility to allow children to catch up. You know, and my just, so just, just some clarification about how that can, can be managed. Bit concerned about the sort of no referrals for autism, I know assessments for six months. I'm just wondering, you know, is there anything, you know, potentially when it happens, how long do we think it'll be before we're fully caught up? And what sort of, is there anything we can do to sort of speak with our health colleagues to try and identify extra resources? Or the ability to make these assessments? And my third point is around the nature of assessments. Because I guess at the moment with, with, with Covid and social distancing, face-to-face assessments must be really difficult or, 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 you know, because obviously, you know, I'm just wondering, can assessments be done virtually via, via, you know, online stuff? So really Sheridan, just, just, just those, just those three points. But they're just minor stuff. It's a really positive report and many thanks and congratulations to everybody who's been working on this. Thanks Mr Chairman.
Thank you councillor Whittington. Sheridan?
Thank you. I can see Heather's going to come in as well, so if I just pick up the moderate learning, the moderate learning difficulties. Yes, I think you're absolutely right councillor Whittington, thank you for the question. I think what we are trying to be very clear with schools and some of the work that Mary and I've been working on together is about making sure there's a distinction between is about making sure there's a distinction between children that need to catch up and actually children where you're starting to give them a formal diagnosis of something like moderate learning difficulties. It is a term that's always used in Lincolnshire. We know that and what we don't want is that we compound that by children who need to catch up as a result of their school absence during the lockdown. So I think some of the definitions that we're doing and the descriptors are really important. But I think that goes hand in hand with some of the work that we've been trying to do around transformation, which you're going to hear more about this afternoon, to make absolutely certain that delay isn't confused with a diagnosis of a particular type of need. And just to sort of reiterate that some of the moderate learning difficulties, you know, there's a real mixture of people using that as a term for children who are making slow progress, when in actual fact that isn't the description. And that's where we need to kind of be really careful. And likewise with the Covid lockdown, we need to be careful around that. Heather?
Thanks very much. So completely agree, councillor Whittington, the delay to the pathway is a real concern. And we are escalating that and we are working with our colleagues in health to look at what can be done about that in the meantime. So we are concerned about it. We've got our Children's Transformation Board where we're raising it and we will continue to express our concerns about that and work with our partners in health about potential solutions.
Thanks, Heather.
Thank you, councillor Whittington. Do we have any further questioners?
Sorry, 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 Mr Chairman. I just had my third point, which was about doing, how easy is it to do all this work virtually instead of face-to-face? Because I'm guessing you can't do a lot of assessments face-to-face.
Oh, yes.
My understanding is one of the challenges around the pathway is that in order to undertake some of the assessments, actually seeing and hearing a child's speech is really important. And so that's one of the reasons why there is anxiety about how to reinstate that safely. And of course, by the very nature of these children, some of the restrictions that you put in place to keep things safe will be supportive of getting the best assessment of them undertaken, because they may find them quite intimidating. So I do, it is complex. You're absolutely right. I think what, what we don't want though is to see the progress we've made lost or to not be continuing to be innovative about how we can deliver this differently, because it's not right, that the waiting times aren't right and we don't want to see that problem escalate. But it is a real challenge, right?
That's great. Thanks, Heather. Thanks. And thanks Sheridan as well. Thanks, Mr Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Whittington. Yes, it's a very interesting point, this on diagnosis, as it were. Do we have any further questioners? I'm looking and I can't see any further questioners. Is that right, councillor Moore?
Yeah, there's no, no other members have indicated to speak, Chairman.
Thank you very much. Well, in that case, that's all the speakers. And just to recap, the actions required by the committee are to review and comment on the updated action plan of the local SEND inspection. And it's voting time again. Ladies and gentlemen, can I ask all members of the committee to turn their cameras on and agree the proposed actions by a show of hands, please? Cameras on, please.
That's unanimous then, Chairman.
Thank you very much, Trina. Thank you. If any members left their camera on, if they could please turn them off, thank you very much. That concludes that item. We'll now move on to item ten, which is the Children's Services Annual Statutory Complaints Report twenty nineteen twenty. And this system introduces the statutory annual complaints report for Children's Services for twenty nineteen twenty. And I'd like to invite Joe Cavanagh, Assistant Director, Early Help, to present this report. Over to you, Joe.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everybody. I'm substituting for Carolyn Knight today, so I perhaps won't know this quite as well as Carolyn does, but I'll try my best. So just really, I know you've all read the report. I think it's quite a good news story, really. I just wanted to put some of the facts and figures into a little bit of context. So complaints came back in-house into the local authority in two thousand and eighteen and this report deals complaints in the twelve months to the end of March this year. So this is, as we say, a statutory requirement to report to you on an annual basis and it just deals with statutory complaints, which are those which involve a social worker. So it doesn't cover the wide range of services across children's. We have got some work underway since complaints came in-house to have a more comprehensive report that will include those wider services as well as the lots of compliments that we receive about services. And we want to be able to be in a position to report to you on the good views and the success as well. So that is something that's in progress. It's been hindered a little bit because of the last six months and what we've been dealing with. So as you'll see, we've had a hundred and eleven complaints. But just to put a little bit of context, we work with over four thousand children on a plan in terms of those with a social worker. For those that are subject to child in need, child protection, and those who are looked after children by the authority. So that's between four and five thousand children. And we receive around about, on average, just over a hundred referrals into social care every week. So I just wanted to give a little bit of context to the hundred and eleven complaints, because that is from a lot of children and families that we're working with. And it represents a very small proportion of those. As you can see, you'll be pleased to see that there is a big commitment towards seeking early resolution. So this is in line with the way that we work with childrens and families across everything in Children's Services. You'll be aware, and I'll have had updates around our approach in terms of signs of safety, which is very much a solution-focused approach to how we work with children and families. And our complaints is exactly the same. We're a learning organisation and we want to learn from when we don't get it right. Some of the complaints are about human error. We've had some relating to data breaches. And we've addressed that with learning to try and reduce further similar examples. But unfortunately, we don't always get it right. What we've done is we try to seek an early resolution. So when somebody makes a complaint, the approach is to have an early discussion, whether that's with the line manager of the person the complaint's about. We would also encourage children and families to talk to their social worker. And if they're unhappy about something, to have an early conversation so we can, we can try and resolve it without having to go through a formal process. So we have an approach in which we seek to understand what the person's unhappy with and what they might like to see as an outcome from their unhappiness or complaints. So sixty-nine percent, sixty-nine percent of the complaints were substantiated, ten were substantiated and twenty-four partially substantiated. Only one out of the hundred and eleven complaints went to stage two, which is the second stage in the process in which we have an independent person, independent of the local authority, investigating that complaint. And no complaints went to stage three, which is really positive, because the longer the complaint goes on, the more difficult that is for the person that wants, that's unhappy with the service. There were nine referrals to the ombudsman, but no findings were substantiated in relation to any of those. And just in summary, I guess it's disappointing to see that a proportion of the complaints are relating to the conduct and attitude of staff. But as we say, we don't always get that right. We seek to learn and understand and address individual issues, of which there are with a number of staff that we employ, and seek learning to try and ensure that those kind of mistakes don't happen again. I think that's, that's all I wanted to say, but very happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much, Jo. I mean, it's perhaps unsurprising that communication seems to pop up in any of these sorts of scenarios. And it's something obviously to be mindful of. But sometimes perhaps it's people's understanding of what's being conveyed to them. I'm not sure on that. But do we have any questioners, councillor Moore?
Yes, we do, Chairman. Councillor Whittington would like to speak first.
Thank you very much. Councillor Whittington?
Thanks, Mr Chairman, and thanks, Joe. Just, the only real thing is an observation. As you know, I've got, got an adopted son myself, he's twenty, almost twenty-five now. But I do sort of take it interesting, look after children. I'm really pleased that we have, we have a mechanism in place so that, so that any issues that look after children have, you know, can be addressed by the independent reviewing officers, especially if they haven't got anybody to advocate on their behalf, because I guess it must be really difficult if you've got a child, you know, who maybe hasn't got an adult to advocate, that the independent reviewing officers are there so they can so they can sort of intervene on the child's behalf. And it is quite encouraging that no children themselves have actually made a, you know, a complaint in year. In terms of the complaints again received from parents and carers, fantastic, there's only thirteen. You know, the sheer number of look after children, I think that's really positive. And actually, all those complaints that were made, I think, looking through, only one was upheld and one was, one or two were partially upheld. Again, I just think that's, that's, that's really positive. And, and as I say, it's encouraging that looks after children, you know, aren't being forgotten about as part of the process. And actually, we do seem to be, from these numbers, actually, you know, really, really making sure these children are looked after and that, you know, and that if there are any complaints, that the reality is that very, very few of those are then being subsequently upheld. So on behalf of a look after children, many thanks indeed, Joe. Thanks, Mr Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Whittington. I mean, I think it is important to put it in context that the number of complaints received against the sheer number of people who are involved. I was just wondering, is there any data on sort of comparative authorities and how we compare in that? I would think we would compare very favourably with comparable authorities.
Yeah, that's a really, really good question, councillor Kendrick. I don't have it to date to my fingertips, but because it's published data, I'm sure we could get that for you. And I do think we compare favourably. And we've seen a reduction in performance complaints because of our approach really to seek a resolution. I think sometimes people can be unhappy and often just want to be listened to and understood and the problem to be sorted out rather than to go through a lengthy adversarial process, which is what we sometimes feel like in the past.
Yes, early resolution's the name of the game, isn't it, really? Yep, yeah, appreciate that. Thank you for that. Do we have any further questioners, councillor Moore?
No, we don't, Chairman. I just wanted to comment myself really, that it's pleasing to see. If you look over the ten-year trend, for example, the number of complaints at what, just over a hundred versus a hundred and eighty-eight years ago. And I suspect over that time period, the number of looked after children and the number of, the number of sort of interactions that your service area has today is a lot higher than it was ten years ago. So I think it's a positive figure. And it's good to see a lot of those complaints finding local resolutions as well. That's what we want to see. We don't want to have to see things tied up in the corporate complaints systems and everything else. So, yeah, a positive report and thank you very much for presenting.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, councillor Moore. Yes, I endorse everything you say there. It is a very positive report. If there's no further questioners, I'm looking to see, and I can't see any further questioners, councillor Moore, we don't have any more, do we?
No, I'm afraid not, Chairman.
Okay, thank you very much. Well, that's all the speakers then. And the actions required by the committee are to review and comment on the annual complaints report for twenty nineteen twenty. And again, it's voting time. So can members of the committee please turn their cameras on and agree the proposed actions by a show of hands, please? Are we all switched on? How's it looking, Trina?
There's one missing, I think.
Is that councillor Matthews, perhaps?
Yes. How did you know?
He has connectivity problems, we know that. Yeah. Oh, no, there is.
Oh, no, that's unanimous. Yes.
He's on holiday. Where is he? Thanks very much. Thank you, everyone. Thank you. If you could now turn your cameras off, that's great. Thank you very much. We now move on to item eleven on the agenda, which is the Children, Young People Scrutiny Committee Work Programme. And this item sets out the committee's work programme for twenty twenty-one. And I'd like to invite Tracy Johnson, Senior Scrutiny Officer, to present this report. So it's over to you, Tracy.
Thank you, Chairman. I have a few changes to the November agenda to start with. We have an addition, which is the service level performance against the corporate performance framework, quarters one and two. This is replacing the old council business plan performance measures that we used to get. And it'd be the tier two level. Be interesting to know a bit more about tier one and tier two. The report went to the executive on the sixth of October, that was set out, so the appendix there says a bit more detail about the differences of the performance measures there. That's in addition to the work programme. Two of the items, because of the size of the agenda, two of the items now will be briefing papers, so they'll be circulated by email instead. So that is the nought to nineteen health services progress report and the thirty hours of free childcare revision update. And those two are now for briefing papers and not actually on the agenda, but just circulated by email. In terms of the January agenda, we'll have one addition to that meeting, which is the expansion of St Bernadette School Louth. That's again, as similar to the ISW school we've had today. So another one of the SEND programme. Otherwise, the other items are as listed. Fifth of March, again, we have another expansion school report coming forward, which is the expansion of the primary schools folding. So again, that's another pre-decision report, part of that SEND programme. And again, the corporate performance framework will have the quarter three performance measures for that added to that agenda as well. Because of having a couple of extra items added, the transition scrutiny view update, when nothing has been a briefing paper. I'm conscious that Sheridan mentioned earlier about sending some links around the videos, things like that, but maybe put those in the email instead to members so they can have a look on that. So in terms of where we are for up to March, that's those updates. Just to make you aware as well, we do have a couple of other expansion reports coming forward. We've got the expansion of St Lawrence's School, Horn Castle added to the June agenda. And we also have the St Christopher's School expansion coming to the November twenty twenty-one agenda. That's it. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much, Tracy. A very full programme for the coming months. Councillor Moore, do we have any speakers on this one?
There are no speakers, Chairman.
Thank you. Well, we're asked to, as a committee, to review and agree the committee's work programme as set out in the report. And secondly, to highlight and discuss any additional scrutiny activity which could be considered within the work programme. So before we move on to the vote, I just wanted to double check that no members have any suggestions for future scrutiny items. I want to make sure we have everybody involved in this. No further contributions on that then? No. Okay then, well, thank you for that. So can I ask all members to turn on their cameras and agree the proposed actions by a show of hands, please?
It's got a couple missing.
Oh.
Hold on.
Councillor Matthews has probably gone.
Yeah, from those, from those that have voted, it's unanimous anyway. It will be, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank, thank you very much. Well, that's the work programme agreed. Now, I know we have scheduled at one thirty a briefing session. I take it, Tracy, that we're fixed on that time, yes?
My list of officers can maybe come do it earlier and members are able to. It's might have Martin and Sheridan maybe in here still, so they can do a little bit earlier if they're wanting to.
I was just thinking, because we've, we've really done well on time today. I was just wondering whether we could make it quarter past one.
Tracy, can I just check, are we still recording for members of the pub there?
Yes.
Should we, should we complete this meeting and then everyone stay on and we can just discuss it?
Yeah, that's, that's excellent, because it's a briefing rather than a public session. Thank you very much for that point.
Well remembered, Heather.
Yes, well remembered. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. So that now concludes the business of this meeting. And thanks again to everyone for your attendance. And if you'd like to leave the meeting, please by clicking the red icon on your taskbar. Thank you very much, everyone. See you in November. Bye.